In the great city of Espanola today. Today's a city council meeting in the city of Espanola, New Mexico. I'm about to go in there and raise some hell with some people. Let these elected officials know what's going on. And I have a full house. I have a full house kind of here tonight. Counselor, good, how are you sitting? Feeling the chillies, that's all I do here. This lady right here, this lady right here in the green shirt, she's a bitch. Have all kinds of poker meetings going on. Thank you guys for jumping in. Appreciate it. Get ready for this clown show. I can see all this shindig goes. You're blocking my camera. Blocking my camera there, sir. Hey, wanna do an interview after? That's him, my co-anchor shows up. She's gonna be pretty surprising here. No, it'll be longer than that. I have a bigger agenda. So this is the agenda for today. Stroke call, the city minutes, proclamation, to do so, Cordoba. What's up, Uncap? I was gonna hit you up, bro, but this is the last minute shindig, bro. Sorry, bro. There's Pablo Montoya. Fire marshal. Don't fuck with me that way, man. Don't get on my bad side. It's obvious you're this. I go back to the deer and warn you. Front row. Come on, no be shy. I'll be here till Friday. I will, I am going to that. I am going to that. Yeah. I'll be there tomorrow. Okay, yeah, I will be. I brought you this. It don't work. Here comes, here comes a piggy. Here comes a piggy calling Vlad. It's sunshine and rain moves here.
I have a dual one that has two locks, so I have one mine and one that stayed at the table. That's why you heard it better on my YouTube. So you can have it.
Cause it like, like for a while you can hear it clear and then after a while it just crackles off crazy. Hala madre, Pablo Luján's here. Look, Pablo Luján made it up, okay? Look, I see, oh, he's gonna sign up for public comment. Look, there's the chief. Look, there's the chief right there. They're like that, buddy. They're like that. Look, there's, there's Miss Peggy right there. This fucking Mr. Burns. This guy we call him Mr. Burns. This guy in the suit. Did you see? She tried to say hi and she backed away. Cause she saw it was me. This guy right here we call him Mr. Burns, cause of his nostrils right here. Mr. Burns right there. All these fucking wannabe politicians. These cocksuckers. My name's Eric.
Thank you all. Thank you for joining us. This is the regular meeting for the month of August, August twenty-seventh. The Espanola City Council. Thank you for joining us this evening. Would you all please join me in the presence of allegiance?
Oh, the city is muted if you can't hear anything on demo.
Can you hear us now? Hamas is having trouble hearing too. Hello, testing one, two, three. Can you hear us in Zoom world and in the internet? Testing one, two, three. Can you guys, uh, Council Ben Vides and Council Satorres, can you stand by?
Sure thing, testing one, two, three. Can you hear me?
Council Ben Vides.
Can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay.
And Council Archibald Toya, is she online too?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, then we had an issue with the agenda. We have two things that didn't make it on here, but we typically do. So invocation scene will be met by Council Pedro on this. I would thank you for this, especially the evening. You gave us a ring. We thank you for the support. We ask that the spirit by us making the right decisions. Jesus be, amen. Amen. Thank you, members of the governing body. Uh, before you, you can, uh, hope for getting broke. And clerk, could you please call the rolling CD?
Mayor Cotan, please, Sumartinez.
We mean honor to her.
Council Felicia Chuleta Toya.
Present.
Council Petro Valdez.
Here.
Council Nenette Vardrigas.
Present.
Council Aaron Salazar.
Present.
Council, Council Samuel Leview.
Here.
Council Denise Benavides.
Present.
Council Justin Sanz Torres.
Present.
You don't want me to.
Thank you. Uh, I needed to make an announcement from the clerk's office. If you're going to be speaking at all, you need to turn on your mic, hold the mic as close to you as possible so that, um, the transcript, transcript writer can get the whole accurate details of your commentary. So we need to end for every other meeting. Who was the other announcement, Craig? Oh, that's the day that was the person thing else?
No.
Additionally, because there's someone either in Zoom world, we have to still vote by vote. Moving on, we have the approval of the agenda for this evening. Uh, under discussion, is it a motion to approve the?
I would like to move the item under proposed, uh, full council consideration, item H up to B. And when everything shuts down, so.
Motion to, uh, approve the agenda of the following amendment to move item H, which is resolution twenty-three-four dash forty-two, ups to after A.
Cause can we also, uh, can we also move the notes and follow up so that Mr. Marcus doesn't have to sit in the room?
Do we need the proclamation before, uh, for this? Uh, no, we always just keep proclamations and all that.
What do I be on the?
So just H and, uh, I after A.
So H after A was, so that was made by Council Nenette Rodriguez, so that's the original motion. So, uh, is there a second to that?
Is there anything left to add I and after that, please?
Okay, so just take, wait, yeah, you guys can't be heard. Neither on the internet, neither. You need to hold the mic as close to you as possible. Council Valdez. There also, I noticed that, uh, uh, council comments not on there. Possibly. I think that would probably be okay. Uh, will call council comments right after public comments? Alright. Can the clerk read back? There's multiple, uh, there's multiple amendments. Did you get a copy of that or maybe the text versions?
The first, uh.
Well, probably, well, the clerk, does the clerk have, cause you don't have a mic.
Oh, I do have it, but if you, I'll be doing it later.
You don't have a mic, when you come out here to?
Welcome to the clown show. They don't have their shit together here.
Council Rodriguez moved to, uh, asked to move item H up to, uh, right after B, then up to A. And then, uh, Cortin Martinez asked to move item I up to after H. Is that correct?
And then, and then there's an addition.
And then Council, uh, Valdez asked to add council comments to, after public comments.
Uh, this for cleaning housekeeping purposes. Is it alright if we can just have all of these motions, all of these? Yeah, one motion for all the settlements as Council H is. Is that okay? Alright, let me have a second. Second, second by Council Valdez, motion made by, uh, Council Nenette Rodriguez to amend that agenda with the following amendments as reflected in the record. Second by Council Pedro Valdez, is there any discussion? Alright, Ben Vina, can I, uh, call for a roll call vote?
Mayor Cotan, please, Sumartinez.
In favor.
Council Felicia Chuleta Toya.
In favor.
Council Petro Valdez.
Yes.
Council Nenette Vardrigas.
What motion?
Council Aaron J Salazar.
In favor.
Council Samuel Leview.
In favor.
Council Denise Benavides.
In, in favor.
Council Justin Sanz Torres.
In favor.
Motion for a say to.
Thank you. Moving on this evening, you have a consent agenda before you. The consent agenda includes the July twenty-third and the July twenty-ninth city council meeting minutes. Motion to adopt the consent agenda by Mayor, uh, Council Pedro Valdez, second by Council Aaron Salazar. Is there, uh, there's no discussion on this evening. Please call for the roll, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Cotan, please, Sumartinez.
In favor.
Council Felicia Toya Chuleta.
In favor.
Council Petro Valdez.
Yes.
Council Nenette Vardrigas.
What motion?
Council Aaron Salazar.
In favor.
Council Samuel Leview.
In favor.
Council Denise Benavides.
In favor.
Council Justin Sanz Torres.
In favor.
Motion can I say to?
Thank you. Can you admit Mr. Rennick into the, into the meeting as well? We can't get anything. Is he here? Moving on, we have public comments or the comments ended. He may not see me in the same seat.
Chris Satchel. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the governing body, tonight I come to you in a different capacity. Today I come to you as Chris Satchel of the F W capacity commander. VFW Public Safety Award. For all, uh, first responders, for any medical, for any EMT, non-forcement, firefighters and dispatchers and explo, E O B completions. I would like to get, as we will put on the map this year, with these awesome awards. We also have two others. The Citizen Education Program. For teachers K through twelfth grade are eligible to apply, nominations considered by themselves or other teachers. Voice of Democracy is a new scholarship for students ninth to twelfth grade. They have a chance of winning a $5,000 scholarship at VFW International. The Patriots Pen Award is for students ninth, eighth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They have a chance of winning a $5,000 scholarship also at VFW National. I will be available for any questions, comments, anybody thinking of these programs. And this is, this is the paper that I heard that the VFW has offered. Thank you.
Bethany Bradley. Good evening, everyone. Um. I, uh, just wanted to thank everybody who has participated in helping us get the event that's going on tomorrow night. Our Freedom Pie fundraiser for a bone cancer warrior. I wanna thank everybody who has helped, donated, and will be coming tomorrow from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Senior Center. We need all the support we can. We need to come together as a community and show how we care about our youth. Um, it's really important. This is just, you know, one of the many things that we need to do. So I'm looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow at the Senior Center from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We have amazing auction prizes. Um, we also have a door prize that will be racked off with your ticket. So we'll see you there. Julie Bennett? Or Julie Bennett?
That's correct. Good evening, Mr. Meyer, Mayor Cotan, city councilors. I'm here to speak in support of Rancho school. This is the second time I've appeared in front of this body to support our beloved pool. I was invited to this meeting by Council Leview, who I met at the Compassion Through Action event at the Pathway Shelter on Saturday. When I brought sandwiches to share. I heard that twenty-two people signed up to receive rehab services that day. That is an amazing accomplishment. Unfortunately, I'm gonna contrast that with what happened at Rancho on August ninth. When the walls, the open grill board of the pool was covered with solid roofing panels and razor wire to keep out intruders. I wanna, uh, speak before that about how I typically refer to Rancho school as Espanola's happy place. It's my designation, but it's a place where diverse members of our community come together to learn to swim, to cool off, to get in shape, to meet each other, to enjoy each other. It is truly a gem in this community. The last few years, I've seen swim lessons, welcoming and really professional guards, the best I've seen in forty years. Pretty much, in a long time. Upgraded showers, chaise lounges, jazzercise, regular schedules that we can rely on. All of which I give credit to Mr. Meyer and the city for providing. Thank you, actually, for that hard work. It's not simple running a municipal pool. Can I close? I timed this and it was.
I apologize, mistake.
That is scary. Snapper, I need it up for the community, please.
Actually, I do.
Well.
Carla, just so you know, I have to violate my fourth amendment. I haven't seen one of these people here. I already know that.
Oh, just to let you know, being a record over here, I'm just accountable.
That's not a record. I don't, I don't even, I can't say that. You said, point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order. You can have what you want, bro. You can have what you want, point of order. No, I'm not here for this. No, I can't. It's about like two minutes, because she, 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 she actually reached out my time. She can't do that. You can't do that. She, she was out of order. You're out of order. With that being said, you guys are a bunch of assholes, man. You guys just want these people thirty days to go pick up their belongings from the encampment. And you guys just, just burn off everybody's property? No, that's a violation of the fourth amendment. I didn't know about search and seizure. Like, hey, look at me all like, God, you want, Eric? What about Better Public Construction Company, buddy? How you, how you tied into that? Why are you pushing that so hard for the city to get in, bro? You guys are fucking idiots. Can't believe you guys. These people are a joke. I haven't seen one of them. Fuck you, Eric. Fuck you, Peggy. Fuck you, John. Fuck you, Carla.
Ms. Bennett, it's listening. I really apologize that we are allowed to be longer, but unfortunate individuals that act the way they do right now make everyone suffer for the consequences of that. Ms. Martinez, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you for all this idea of public comment. Moving on, council comments. Council, you're here.
I wanted to, uh, congratulate, uh, the Chamber of Congress on a successful spirit days. I wanted to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce on its successful spirit days. I think that the event went off really, really well. I also think that both the Rio Rico Camperie Fair and the Santa Fe Towns Fair were both really well done. There were a lot of great animals from Kids in the Valley and hardworking people who did a lot of work there. I was happy to see both fairs, a lot of value representation. I also want to congratulate the Soup Kitchen on raising a lot of money with their fever. They did a great job. And as Ms. Bennett said, Pathway Shelter had a great event this weekend. A lot of people were able to get recovery services. So I'm very happy to see that happening. I am also very thankful to Chris from the VFW for really promoting the scholarship opportunities. I know I'm working with him at the school to try to get those out there as much as possible. So thank you so, thank you so much for promoting those and getting the community involved at the high school and middle school. That being said, I think that we really need to try to figure out ways to help the police address the crime issue in our city. It just seems to be getting worse and worse. I've received tons of reports of people, especially along Fairview Lane, who have seen an uptick in criminal activity all throughout that area. As well as hearing that some crime issues may have been impacting the Sheriff's Department, which now apparently may close its doors. I'm starting to hear that as well. I think that we need to do everything we can. This is a statewide issue. Unfortunately, New Mexico has been ranked as one of the highest impacted states by the recent crime wave. I hope the state can get involved and help us here in the city. And we need to do everything we can to help the police because this needs to be stopped. We need a lot of order and we need, people need to feel safe. I've already had two constituents from Johnson tell me they're moving out of the city due to similar issues. I also have seen that there's an uptick in methamphetamine. And we need to figure out that issue. The last thing we need is another drug epidemic alongside the opioid one. I've already talked to Michelle about the Montana Meth Project, which is a great model for helping prevent, a good prevention model. And I think that we should look into what Montana did. They were able to reduce their methamphetamine usage by seventy-seven percent after figuring out how to implement that model. And I think if we can work with the schools and the RAC stop, we can try to stop this epidemic before it gets out of control or the opioid one. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Counselor Justin Salazak Torres?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is just for City Manager, just an update on the debris here on Rock McMurty. I was told they were going to be cleaned up by today. But the citizens did call me and tell me that it was not done, so I'm going to update on that debris. It came from Dallas and Tacoma Lane from a fire. I think we just could rest on that, right, Mr. Torres? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Evarrigas?
So I wanted to report on our community services committee meeting that we have on August ninth. But before I do that, I want to take a little bit of time to say thank you to the community services team and for all the incredible work that you continue to do. And I would also like to include my bad news in that for your forward thinking and leadership. So during our committee meeting, departments reported all the hard work that they're doing. And I just want to share that with you. The library has two programs that are happening now in September. The first one is Thinking Money for Kids program, where they will teach young kids how to budget and what it means to have credit and all that good stuff. So if you're interested in that, please reach out to Sherri at the library so that she can give you more updates on when that begins. She is also coordinating with Creteville New Mexico Incorporated, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit. Starting in September, they will be providing menstrual bags. And those will be available at the front lobby area for anyone that is in need of those. Sherri will be advertising this so that it gets out into the community. And these will also be replenished on a monthly basis as they go by. The Senior Center is continuing doing the great work that they do. They have a lot of senior trips that happen usually Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And seniors are ecstatic that these are happening once again because for a while they weren't happening. Our Rancho school is, has been open, but will be closing on August thirty-first. It will be moving indoors, opening on September second. And they also reported that there's men's softball league, charity, and girls' volleyball August ninth. We also have a boxing event that's scheduled at the Senior Center that has come before the governing body and has approved it. They are having a really difficult time finding the ring for the boxing event. And they're currently raising money for that. So if anyone is interested in knowing, please get with Ashley so that she can take their donation and pass it along to the boxing event. Thank you.
Mayor Cortez, Ms. Martinez? Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes, I just want to thank the businesses that are keeping their properties and roadways and cleaning up throughout the city. I'm one of those that goes around the city and looks at things that are happening and clean up. I thank all those businesses that are doing that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselors? A little bunch of matters from the mayor. I just had a few. City cleanup day is going to be this Friday, August thirty. We're going to start at nine o'clock. We're going to call me here at the Senior Center. We're going to pretty much focus on the west side here of town. We're inviting, I'm not sure if you got an email from his sponsor or the clerk's office, or asking for a $40 donation from the council to help assist with lunch on Friday, to help the staff. And so please come out and join us. We're hopeful to have you joining us for cleanup day for when we do the last one in March twenty-eighth, right before holy week. The Centennial Commission is going to be meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at the mayor's conference room here at the Lucero Center. Please join us. Additionally, we're going to be having the first fundraiser for the centennial. It's going to be held on September twenty-ninth. It's going to benefit breakfast from eight AM to twelve PM at the Deactress V two Martinez Senior Center. And we're asking all the council if they can help us sell tickets. They can pick up some ticket books from this card of Martinez at the end of the meeting. I just wanted to thank the staff for everything they're doing, the hard work, especially the work regarding the encampment, Streets Department, which is field operations. They are down to two full-time employees. Some have been moved for temporary reasons and then some were summer students. When they were working on the encampment, it actually detailed pulling the wire, wastewater, there's a lot of shit. One, I think, public works for all the hard work they did. The encampment, they were grateful for all the work that you and your staff did to handle that and clean up that area for our community to enjoy again. So thank you to public works. Thank you to all our staff for the consistent work they've been doing day in and day out. Whether it's the police officers going to the center for late submission meetings, talking about the neighborhood watch and chief, various aspects. Our staff are working diligently. We're hopeful that we can do some community beautification efforts by the end of the year. We're icing some of the businesses. We're going to be working on some meetings here in the city as well. And so we're encouraging anyone who's interested in doing a meeting to contact City Hall. And we'll put you in contact with the State Highway Transportation Department. Two months ago, we recognized greatly faith in what they did at taking care of their meeting. We really encourage the community to take care of meetings. Counselor Valdez, we have a beautiful meeting right there, it's your little loop that you take care of on a day-to-day basis. And that's what it takes about how the community can beautification us. At this time, I'd like to recognize with a proclamation honoring Lucia Cordova. And I don't have that. An official, no, 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 it's fine. You guys can do that. I don't need to have something. An official proclamation of the city of Escondola, New Mexico USA. Whereas Lucia Cordova is a young teenager that is full of life and spirit. And whereas Lucia has faced a challenging diagnosis at a young age. And whereas a quick dedication served the city of Escondola as an intern of the Espinoza Police Department while undergoing treatment for her challenging diagnosis. And whereas Lucia has won the respect of coworkers at the city of Escondola and serves as an inspiration to adults and children. And whereas Lucia has plans on continuing her education at Espinoza High School. And whereas she continues to inspire people around her by following her dreams for the future. And whereas the men and women in the Espinoza Police Department, members of the governing body, and all the senior Espinoza employees wish to express appreciation for her kindness and dedication during her city internship. Now therefore, the eight resolve, in the city of Espinoza, I, Togar, and the mayor of the city of Espinoza, together with the city council, to give by proclaiming August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, to be Lucia Cordova Day in the city of Escondola, New Mexico, in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. So we can say a couple words about understanding. And if you can see that one, we should speak it.
Since we're quick, as you know in our profession, some of the first things we use are compassion and empathy for all the stuff that we see. But this young lady, it had an impact on not only myself, but on our department and even here in City Hall. So what I'd like to do, if I could, I'd like to kind of just a quick thing with that we wrote down that I wanted to say. Lucia, we want you to know that we are so honored to be considered dear friends. Your perseverance and resiliency while facing significant challenges has been nothing short of amazing. In the short time we've been friends, I have seen you turn adversity into boundless hopes and dreams. You have far exceeded what any person, regardless of age, would consider courage and strength in the face of extreme hardship. In conclusion, I appreciate our friendship and will continue to keep you in my thoughts and prayers and you no longer just an intern, dear friend.
There's this. Hopefully you'll hang it up next to your, all the other folks in the room. The last thing I'd like to say is this is going to happen without the assistance of our community. Beth and Bradley had a lot to do with it. She is almost solely responsible for everything that we're doing tomorrow. She came up with the silent, the silent auction with all the items. I'm not part of it, I'm an assistant, but I recognize how valuable she was to us. And Bethany was the one that first introduced us at a class that I gave at a school. But she deserves every bit of it and we are in awe of what she's done. Thank you. She's been running this fundraiser. Do you want to talk real quick about the fundraiser before I turn over to the council?
If I could, tomorrow's the fundraiser.
Yeah, she can come up here because it's getting on the video.
As you all heard, this is on her behalf and I'm not going to divulge too much. I think we all know what she's been through. But what she's faced, and I saw her a couple of days after her surgery in Albuquerque. I saw when she first came back to Espinoza. And just to see someone the way she faces, I couldn't imagine myself in that position. So with that being said, Bethany Bradley came up, she and I were talking. She came up with this idea. And Bethany, I have to admit, she's carried the biggest part. I've done everything I can. But tomorrow, we're having a Freedom Pie fundraiser for Lucia, who we've called our bone cancer warrior, or what she's gone through. It's going to be tomorrow at the Senior Center. It's going to be an eight dollars to have, to enjoy, great Freedom Pies. We're also going to have a lot of items that are going to be inside an auction. We have a couple of knuckle bikes. We have a George Foreman boxing, autographed boxing glove. We have a Foreman grill. We have jewelry. We have a lot of other things. And a hundred percent, everything that we deal with, that we, that we collect is going to go to Lucia Cordova. Her de facto mom, who's been there for her. She had to take time off from work when she was in the hospital. They didn't have room for her at McDonald's house. So with the financial difficulties that they've been through, this could help a lot and it would alleviate a lot of that. So I ask that everybody listening, everybody that's here, please show up tomorrow to show your support for not only a wonderful young lady, but one of the most wonderful guardians, parents that I've ever met. So hopefully we see you all tomorrow. Thank you.
Please, Mayor, on this, and Eric, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, good counsel. The city has had you in my office a couple times and walked into City Hall and police station. And just an amazing young lady and, you know, I just hope that you need to listen and come out to support this young lady and the family. And obviously, God bless you and your heart prayers and I thank you for being who you are.
Mayor Cortez, Ms. Martinez?
Lucia, also, I just want to say that you're blessed with the support that you got.
This government's a thing.
You're a friend. You're also blessed by having a good friend that's there to help you with the situation. You're a very good neighbor. Who will be there and will support you and will do whatever we can to help you in this, you know?
Ms. Evarrigas Salazak?
Lucia, thank you. I've heard, I don't know you personally, but you're a very strong person, good attitude. And Hollander, just keep it up. Okay, Lucia, thank you for all the support you've given.
Counselor Valdez? I'll be supporting you tomorrow with tickets and stuff, so I'll be there. Thank you. Counselor Neneth Evarrigas?
So I got to know you, you're Bethany. And I just want to say that your resiliency is a characteristic that you don't find really often. And I think that's what's getting you through your trials. Continue with the positivity and your resiliency. And I'm sure you'll get through this all, and I'd just support you to remember. Grandma, thank you for all that you do for her. I'm sure it's difficult at times, but you are surely a blessing to her.
Counselor Neneth Evarrigas?
Lucia, I know that you're a close family friend of ours and so is your grandma. But if you don't know, her grandma worked closely with my mom at the Espinoza Public School in the nurse's office. And, you know, when the diagnosis came through, we had found out about it. Me and my mom tried everything we can to make sure we can get as much support as we need. And we're doing everything we can to make sure that you get through this. And thank you so much for being so strong. You are an incredibly strong person and I'm so proud of you. And I also want to really, really, two big shout-outs, begging to the chief. You've been amazing through this, chief. Thank you so much for helping her and visiting her. That is, it's incredible and, you know, not enough people know about what you've done behind the scenes to help her. Thank you so much, chief. We appreciate it. And thank you to the Espinoza Valley High School football team for taking time out of their day and on the weekend and off practice to go and build a wheelchair ramp for Lucia at her favorite park home. So thank you so much, Lucia. And I can't wait to hear every talk.
Any counselors in Zoom world want to turn in?
I'll turn in, Mayor. Hi, Lucia. So sorry I could be here tonight and a little bit of the weather. I haven't met you, but I feel like I know you because Bethany talks every day out for you about you every time. I haven't met you, but I feel like I know you because Bethany talks every day out for you about you every time. But I will definitely be there to support you tomorrow. Bethany's gonna be at work, so I'll be over there early. I'm coming to meet you and your grandmother. You're an amazing young lady and I'm sure you are and I'm excited to meet you.
Counselor Justice, Counselor Torres.
Thank you, mayor. Lucia, as some counselors said, I don't personally know you, but God bless you on your journey. God bless your grandmother. And you will be in my family's purse. Thank you.
Lucia, I just wanted to thank you. I don't know you personally, but I've had the opportunity to hear many things about you from the chief. You've been a warm breath of fresh air there at the PD. Too big energy and excitement there. And I can see it by the support that you receive from some of our police officers. You've become a part of the PD's family, so we're grateful to have you there at the PD. And you're always more than welcome to join us here at the town in the city of Espinoza. And thank you, Lucia. I look forward to seeing you tomorrow and supporting you in your life as well. Just a reminder, the Senior Center is hosting a fundraiser for Miss Lucia Cordova. It's gonna be from five o'clock, five thirty to seven thirty at the Beatrice BQ Martinez. Tickets are eight dollars. Tickets are eight dollars. Please join us to support Miss Lucia Cordova as her benefit fundraiser in her honor, a benefit free of pie fundraiser. Please join us again tomorrow night at the Beatrice BQ Martinez City Series. Moving on, matters to the city manager, Mr. Yunga.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Cortez, counselors. Second month, the biggest council, uh, meeting of the month, last meeting of the month. So it's my directors' reports. And I believe all my directors are here. I believe the council, you do have all the directors' reports for you. A lot of them are dedicated to the community process. And the finance, council of PDs, city council of SLS, uh, Mayor Cortez's PDs. A lot of them are dedicated there. And as you look into their comments and thinking, the staff, the great job that they did down at the cleaning of the encampment. But I'd also like to give very, very special thanks to DOT Secretary Ricky Cerca, Executive Director Jerry Valdez. And especially Jerry, because when I took this job, I knew what we're going through. It's a congressional party for New Mexico sixty-eight. And the twenty-two million dollars being stalled out, in and out, back and forth. And the frustrations that we're going through with that. It's been twenty-four years since New Mexico sixty-eight Riverside Drive was paved for instance. It was not on the list to get done because of the funding, but Jerry Valdez kept his word to me and he got it paid. And so I think, you know, I wanna give Jerry, I probably also kind of a post-heresy line, and Secretary Cerca, and Mr. Ricky Padilla, who is the construction engineer for the retirement state of Mexico. Just a big thank you, thank you. I know that the citizens are really thankful for it. New Mexico sixty-eight finally getting rid of both sides, and making it South Town. And he's committed a few other roads for us to get done. And the money's arrived as the council and the mayor, Mayor Cortez, know. The money's a bit committed for the sookie way. We'll be breaking down that soon. And that's a total reconstruction and we're trying to also, if there's any developers eventually, we're developing that area as well before we start letting down that we could place it in the infrastructure and the utilities. So we're also meeting with different developers and that. My time is only directing and Mr. Aguirre, I didn't even get some. And then I wanna thank the counselor, Ben, for that. But you know, we've got a lot of work to do and I just wanna really thank the people at PD, especially to Lucia and Sealy and I can give a bunch of thank Bethany. We don't always see our ideas, but this is certainly something that the community comes together and is interested in. So thank you, thank you, Bethany. Going back to Clovis and the next one this week, I wanna give a big shout out to Elijah Marius. He got elected to a position on the public works affiliate. Elijah, congratulations. What the strides that are being made in social services, department, mayor, Cortez, council is just amazing, what Michelle's been able to bring to this community. It's phenomenal what she's gone through, what she's been through, how she works today and all. Getting with two homeless people in my office today. Just to build a way to get them back on a path of dignity. And the progress that she's going, that she's just, you know, the team
This dude's full of shit.
The grants that she's going after, the community she got from the governor's office. It's been, it's been a lot of, like, thank you so much for your job. Ashley Snyder wrapping up these at Archipos Park. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't know the mayor attended the big hot dog activity. So our success, thank you. Michael Allen, I don't know what to say about you, bro.
The thing's so cold.
No, bro, we just, just the emotion you have to our community, to the city of Espinoza. It's amazing and thank you, bro. Party Department, guys, all these awesome, you know, it's a lot of, you know, I'm like, I'm used to those. Definitely she checks in and goes, I kind of fix all my response, but. But Pablo, wanna congratulate you on the cross commission, which is the number of councils in the front. Congratulations, bro.
This dude's full of shit.
He has a community and everything, you know, everything that's going on up at the Party Department. They've cleared the ground. They're ready to rock the road with the new training facility, new facility. I was there yesterday with them, with other departments. The collaboration between all the departments is starting to gel, starting to work where we need to be. There's always going to be bumps in the road, but as long as you can get everyone on the same page and working together, that's what counts. And that's what I saw at the mystery I could do with both them. It's, it's, thank you, guys. Thank you, Elijah. Superintendent, is there superintendent, thanks. My answer is I just want to Google.
Very professional, very professional.
It's a great deal and I just wanna thank you, guys, and make your work chief. Johnny, thank you. Saying the wisdom that she always provided me. When you come in to see me on the first day, didn't you calm me down? Thank you. Where are you sitting? Stand up. Chief, you know, what we've gone through the last month, the trespassing, the inhales, the ordinances and everything you do, be in and be out, and focus, you know, at the police department, the police, you know, and the mayor and I are there with you. And now you're going to be at the high, uh, here in San Diego to train. If you just attended, you know, that's, not everybody gets invited to those things. And for our police chief in Espinoza, if you recognize and say, hey, you know, I did that. And to the men and women that you have underground, our community chief and the hard work that they do. And I sit and I talk to them at times, like, see them pull over somewhere, I'll come over and I'll talk to them, you know, I do this and
Obstruction.
My hat's off, chief, with what you have and what you're doing. It's amazing and I just wanna tell you thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, it's, you're here a little late when I have to call you, so when I get woken up, you know. You get woken up, and then her. Thank you, chief, and thank you, staff. All of you that participated and do what you do, be in and be out of the city, I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you.
My director's staff have a question here. Mr. Johan, can you follow up on Counselor Justice's request regarding the degree on Martha Kirby?
Well, mayor, mostly that is on native American, okay, we just talked to somebody. And the degree was a fire at the legal, uh, deputy chief, he did a week to slow down. Elijah, to the, we told her that her insurance has to, she has to put that on her insurance as well and fund her property as well as, as that one. So we told her to add that to her insurance. Because the whole fence was, had to be insured, a bunch of other properties she has. So we told her to include that into her proposal to her insurance. That is her property and also that one.
Mayor Cortez, thank you so much.
Uh, hold, uh, hold, uh, Counselor Justice, I was at twice another happy because you asked the original request.
Thank you, mayor. I guess I understand that, but my less understanding was there between departments. It was, you know, shoving the issue back and forth on who was gonna clean it. I guess my concern and my issue is that we get promised that we get cleaned up two months later. Still haven't been cleaned up. And then last that I heard, which would be a couple of days ago, was that it would be taken care of by today. And then now I'm hearing this and then again, I guess it's kinda going back and forth between departments. Um, well, they need help if they want us to do it or vice versa. But it usually kind of happened, I know that some of our staff did promise the individuals that we take care of it. Let's just follow up with the landlord and just communicate with the city. It's key, they still like they're not hurt. They definitely called me at quarter till five to tell me that it wasn't cleaned up yet, so I just wanna put that on the radar. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, city manager.
Okay.
All right, Counselor. Lucia, if you're okay with it, we'll go there and clean up. It's, it's gonna, it's a tree that we had to drop. So that's what's the degree she's talking about, so it could be, uh, redwood tree or, not redwood, uh, cottonwood tree.
We can't hear.
Sorry, but.
They're handling it. Counselor Justice, I'm sorry, short, because Fire Marshal Pablo Montoya's in the audience and he's not close by the mic, but essentially it's gonna get handled.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And we'll get to an update by the end of the week where we're at, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Cortez, thank you so much.
So I have a big issue with the graffiti that seems to be sitting on all the way, way too long in this hallway. We have a big marking at Starbucks trash and we have another one at Freddy's. I keep hoping every day when I pass through there at some level that that's gonna be repainted. And it's just making so sad that it hasn't been handled. We can't all have graffiti to sit for a day and just be that disentithing people to continue and do it. We have to be reactive and we have to do it quickly and making sure that we're keeping the remains clean and healthy. So I know that the graffiti officer is with the traditional trash and he's wondering why. I have concerns about why it's taking so long for that to happen. If he could reach out to that department and see what's going on with that, what's the problem? The other thing I want to recognize, and we've seen the staff, the swift reaction and the movement, getting the sinkhole on table seven and six rectified so fast. I think it's really important to know that a lot of people from District Three are very concerned about that. Very early in the morning, getting out to the salon at seven in the morning. The whole house started burning pretty early. And I just really wanna recognize all the streets and everybody that was out there. How come you guys get that done? Because you did a good job and you're keeping that up and did the payment on it. And it's not very breathing. Oh, I thought you didn't do a team of that. So thank you, guys, thanks to them. It's just catching me. The other thing, the attendance at the backpack situation was amazing. I wanna recognize Counselor Justice, our foundation, Captain Delothis, Counselor Nenette. And anyone who took backpacks and helped with that situation. Definitely wanna recognize the fire department. It's always good. Also, the mayor's having a need that the city has, goes, always show up. They took backpacks for about four and a half hours and I don't know how many hot dogs those kids ate that day, but it was amazing. Just everything that you guys do, taking the truck up there, spreading with kids. And you got some high value there somewhere, I'm sure. It's a blast to see the kids that, you know. Especially on a date night out on St. Rita that day, you know, all the way to my big house. On the way off, you know, left to go surf. It's no fun for four hours. Pretty amazing. And your dedication to this community has ever been and every day, and every day that you do your work is shown by the perseverance and the work. Oh, one other thing, I wanna recognize Nenette who's supposed to also bring her hard work at the department. And they want, uh, Valerio, sorry. Valerio, Valerio, Valerio.
Valerio's Valerio.
I can stop. Really appreciate you guys' attention and letting me do the work.
Counselor, if you can, I mean, that, that's your candidate.
I could, Counselor.
I have a correction on the closing date to Archipos. It will be August thirtieth and the opening for the Reservoir Center will be September ninth. Opening at the Reservoir Center, September ninth, closing at Archipos, August thirtieth.
Mayor Cortez. Counselor, just an update that came forward, directors meeting yesterday from the courts, that all the, I think this court areas that we can, that they're probably about two to cover. And those were all given to them the week before. Mark was team and represented the courts. Courts always attend my directors' meetings. And they outline those areas and there were that team. Now, when he, he got somehow, he pitched in with the post guys. And of course, always asked that, that is superintendent of the streets and the other areas. He also went on about two as well, but it was all the courts that handled it. And then they did, we, yeah, yesterday, the directors' meetings, so it was covered. They did, they did cover it and, but. He didn't sit, I didn't, I don't think I had to sit with my folks, but I know that was a good scene of yours as well.
Counselor, good to do. I just wanna thank Pablo for stepping up to help with that tree situation. I got the same, and the whole fire department. Because, you know, I did get those same calls and I had the same concerns as Counselor Justice. So thank you for stepping up and we're used to say that and we appreciate it. And then I wanted to just inquire about the state flags. I've seen a lot of, I have a particular, um, concern about some of the state flags and the conditions that are in across the city. I know that the DFW stepped in, replaced the line of plaza today.
They did, they did. We had, that's our problem. We don't support them.
Well, if, if, if there's any way that the one here, the Reservoir Center can be at least two, appreciate it.
This will be your counsel? I just ran the flag, just came in, it's blocked in my office. We got four sets of the same flag, you know, Spanish flag. And what else can I say? And so the, the seats have to give us some sort of opioide and satapla. Another request to put all those in there. We had a four beach flag and I wanna thank you so much. The military flag went up today. Uh, I know Chris didn't allude to that when we spoke to the council area, but the military flags did go up today, uh, the others didn't. So Jeff's crew, was it you, Elijah? I can't, did I put up the flags?
Um, do you mind, that one mine and Jeff's aren't?
Cause they are, they are.
Yeah, there was, they're crew doing that one. We obtained the flags for the other stuff, but they put them up on those.
I want to recognize Chris, uh, from the DFW for, for putting pressure on the city to, to recognize those flags. And, and, uh, you talked to me, you've contacted Mr. Lujan and recognized the staff. But he responded very quickly and, uh, ordered them. It took a while to get here, so, but we thank you guys for that. I also would like, uh, Mr. Lujan to recognize Sheriff Willie Mannerfield in his efforts to work with Chief Reseda and, uh, the Fire Department by a cross commissioning of the public. And I think it's important that all entities in public safety and our community have very open communication. And I think when we have somebody cross commissioning, uh, that could benefit all of these, uh, I think it's very important. So thank you, Pablo, for your efforts with that. And also thank Sheriff for his efforts to do that. Can you just make some remarks on Fire Department?
Um, I'll, 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 Chief Marques, Deputy Chief, let me tell. Pablo, give me a note, too. Just cause he got a star also, you know.
Maybe there.
Chief Counselor, can you, uh... So we had a, we have biannual, or bi, biannual, biweekly progress reports with the contractor and with all the subcontractors that are involved with the project. So last Thursday, we had a meeting with them. They're almost done excavating the area for the path that it's going to be. They're over escalating where the tower's going to be and building up that, that foundation. So they go about, I can't remember what they said, I think it's eight feet deep. And then they add dirt and they come in and civil test it. And so make sure that it's the right, um, compacted and the right hardness for the dirt, for the foundation for that tower. So that's what they're doing. It looks like they were done that today. They have the company out there that was human testing. And they have the excavator that was, that was putting the dirt in. And it looks like they're almost to, uh, the level of the path. So once that's complete, um, we're, we're gonna put in the hydrants. And we talked, and that's what we had a meeting with yesterday with the, with the city. And with Mayor Porter Kim, the city manager, we had a meeting with the public works. And with the water department to get all that in place, uh, for the hydrants. And then we're gonna tap into the main system for the water, for those hydrants and the new system. So that looks like it's gonna be on Wednesday, Thursday. So now once we get that done, we can tap into the hydrants and get that ran. Um, then we're ready to pour the concrete. So hopefully here in about, I would say, two to three weeks, we can get ready to, uh, pour the concrete. And then, uh, we did talk to the, the, the building itself. And they were supposed to be here in September.
Where did the building stay?
Uh, yeah, the apartment building. Uh, so I'm telling you, cause the WHP is the who we purchased the building from. Um, the five-story, uh, two-story burn facility. They're supposed to be here in September, but after we talk to them, they're not gonna be here until about January, the end of December. So, but that'll give us enough time for that concrete that it's set and hardened and we're ready to go. So I think that's all we have. Do you have anything else? Two more things?
One little thing that I have to say, there's stuff that's, I'm working on my, uh, my grant for the State Fire Marshal Office. I'm trying to work until it's maybe on that with my secretary. My good old friend Carla. I think it's, she helps me a lot with that and we're, I'm working and trying to get a lot of paid props for the, for the burn building. So even when we have, like, so if you have a car fire, so if you have a dumpster fire, or if you have, uh, what do you call it? The, the burns that aren't, you know, not...
Which one? The 3D?
Oh, uh, visual.
Yeah, 3D visual, uh, burns where you don't, without anybody, you could take in, uh, volunteers and not scare them. Right away, uh, what a real fire is like, so it's, you carry a hose, it's a 3D and it'll shoot. It makes it look like it's shooting bottom, but it's shooting, uh, the, the stuff. So I'm trying, I'm hoping that if I, we get that, I mean, we're gonna have to grab a chain of props for our facilities, but... Is that's enough?
We just want to thank, uh, Mayor Porter, City Manager, and the directors for, for coming together yesterday and being this kind of a, on speed and there as well.
Not also want to thank all of you guys for your, for your support and everything that I, my guys come on and ask for. If that wasn't for you guys, you know, we wouldn't be where we're at. We have the support from the council, from my mayor, from the city manager, Mayor Porter. I mean, she, she, she knows everything that's going on in my department and, uh, we can come up there and ask her what we need, what we, or how she do this, and she guides us through all this. And I thank you, thank you for all that. And City Manager, I thank you for all your support and everything. But to say, my wisdom is not always there for you. I mean, I don't need all the wisdom that I should.
Should I go to Carla?
It's like, it's like, uh, knowledge, that's what it's.
But like I say, I thank you guys, all the constable talent. And I'm saying, I want to be for your support and everything that you guys have, and what it is that help my staff. And, you know, I guess I want to, we get better and better. Thank you.
It's that virtual reality that he was talking about. And we, we went to EMS, EMS conference this week. We actually tried it for EMS and it was awesome. You can actually go into it and see your patient. It was actually really cool. So I'm sure the fire is just as cool. So hopefully we get that graphic, I'm wanting to purchase it. But thank you, Mayor.
Uh, I believe the judge, Judge Jake, what hit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, please, my, um, my son's here at football practice. But just in response to, well, it's San Juan, the, the graffiti part. Um, Zach, right now Zach's, he's a one person, like the city manager said, he's a one person show. And he's actually been working on a project at the skate park, probably Washington, entire skate park. Um, and really made all the graffiti on the cement, on all the ramps, on everything for the skate park. So, um, I had told him to finish that up before he finished up anything in the city. Everything in the city's done. Um, I just wanted all the council out there, myself on 505-470-7732. Anytime you guys need it, if you have to feed anything, just please shoot me a text message and I'll delegate it to Zach as soon as possible.
Uh...
You need a clear makeup?
There's a small area in the Sacred Heart parking lot where one of the planters, uh, it's a rock. It's a, a wall planters, there's a small area, it'd be facing, uh, North Carolina.
I'll send Zach up there and look for it and cover it up.
Appreciate it.
Kind of a good deal.
Counselor Samuel to do, and then we'll go to Counselor Dees.
Uh, City Manager, I just wanted to follow, follow up on the fact situation for me. I remember one of my buddies from the Air Force asked me if there was any, uh, Space Force flags. Did you order, put that, I don't order, I don't order military flags. I don't have a chance to go with them, you know, where they're going at, you know?
Mayor Porter, past thing to do, uh, they, they all about one because that, that, well, there, he's played 12 years in the Air Force, so... I know he likes to doggone the army, you know? He, he did 12 years in the Air Force, so you better believe he brought that Air Force flag.
No, the, the Space Force, so.
Space Force?
Yeah, it's under the Air Force, so yeah, like, uh, okay.
Yeah, of course. Yes, it was great.
Oh, you're using the dog, you're using...
What an idiot. This guy's an idiot. Oh, man.
Well, my Counselor Denise, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to take some time to thank my fellows, uh, this Martinez, uh, Director Michelle. And especially Espinosa, who joined us in the development meeting with home wise. And I hope it all went team. Uh, I want to leave Espinosa out, she got on and pulled up all the maps and studies on where the city has properties. So the people don't visit. And then the team took the master's at properties. And I wanted to mention really quick that we have a small advantage. Um, I called out the note for on Friday, um, for developer assistance, which includes infrastructure costs, I thought it's mainly for... So hopefully they can get some rights, um, with that being put out there. And then I wanted to also, um, thank Mike one more time for the assistance he gave to Michelle and I. As we put it down, I mean, boy, we called him a few times as we meet him. And he's a man, he will do whatever he needs, if he'd like. And I want to get a little bit of that to Mr. Martinez, because, uh, he asked me to have a meeting next week. He's very interested in updating our own, so about the housing. So we had a conversation as to, um, what we could do to start down the cost of base and the price of housing there. And updating our addresses to work with that. So I want to thank him for his services and that as well.
Uh, Judge, you ready again?
No, I believe that, oh.
Is there any other comments for the manager report? Actually, do you want to call Francisco?
Yeah, you're welcome. Good evening, Mayor, uh, Counselor's Manager. I just want to make a quick comment, the boxing club will be doing, um, if I may say, a pizza night. So if everybody can do pizza night on Thursday, um, if they're interested in us, please, they'll go to the boxing club. So just let them know that we're, um, ready to get pizza and mention the boxing club. And also circle, circle the, uh, flag ticket for them when you go and get your pizza. So if we can all do pizza, I'm pretty happy that we need, okay? Pizza Thursday. Can you also, uh, please?
Um, actually, I wanted to thank you and the staff that paid you guys' service, the public sentiment, all the hard work they've done this summer. And you said, I'm saying, I'm so grateful because we have activities for our kids and people who need advice. Paying guys' constantly for the summer, so thank you for all that work there. Thank you.
Thank you. I second that.
And for that, what are your examples?
It was a lot of fun and worked with the five time in my staff building, and we were happy.
But it's also recognize, uh, Mr. Larry Hill.
Oh, yes. Mr. Larry Hill is the DJ for that, did phenomenal job. And he donated, contributed to services to a lot of the community and so we're grateful for that. Um, I wanted to commend Mr. Lujan. I really thank Mr. Lujan because, uh, he has so many contacts with the Department of Transportation. We're finally making some headway on many of our roads here in our community because of his knowledge and background. So thank you, Mr. Lujan. He's, he's been able to find how many grants that the city has received over the last five, six years and getting them finally drawn down. He's been able to get that money back for us and so one...
Why are you putting this bucket now?
Coming up later, it's called White Street. So, Mr. Lujan, I really want to thank you. Uh, I truly believe in a lot of this, you hear. Uh, Riverside Drive is probably being repaid because of one man sitting up here on the dais, and that's Mr. Lujan. Want to thank all the directors and all the hard work with the day in and day out. Um, you know, we're not tan peh, we're not taos in terms of budget. And our directors go beyond some of our directors' bank. When some secretaries make it, the labs are constantly saying, so we're grateful for all the sacrifices. And all the bunch of over here that make pizza. But, um, thank you for everything you guys do for our community and, uh, people need to realize that. And this is a city where the department directors are out there picking up trash. They're out there, uh, like Johnny, they're out there working on the, on the, on the scenes. We don't have directors here at the City of Espinola that sit back behind a computer or desk. And directors that want to be like that here at the City of Espinola may not apply. And so we're grateful for you guys for what you do. Thank you. Now, I'd like to break from all further questions for the manager report. We're going to move on to items proposed for council consideration, discussion items, estimate. First off, for this meeting, this request for co-sponsorship of Señor Espeñola, presented by Mean Cities Director Mike Adams, Recreation Program Supervisor Ashley Snyder, and Professor Herbert Sobian. Thank you, Ernest. Thank you, Agent. Appreciate you guys tonight.
Good night, señor. Good night.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselor, CM. Uh, before you were presenting, uh, we have the Fiesta Espino presented by...
Anyhow.
Basically by, uh, I guess it didn't show, but, uh, his, his name is Roberto Sorano. He's with the schools, Fiesta Espino City Schools. And what we're trying to present here is just a program of Latin, Latin culture. So we're gonna bring a lot of different, um, young people from different countries to come and present what they do. Food, music, dance, and we're, uh, and we're co-sponsored for it. All that asks you to go over what they're asking us for, we won't be like you to approve them to.
Uh, yes, City Manager. So this still go through the community service, um, I'm leaving on May, I'm sorry, I'll be in August, 22nd. They are requesting a co-sponsorship for this event to, um, be on October 5th. And they are running to, um, the facility, the mistone and the plaza area. Um, they also would like to get, um, the fees waived for that part of the co-sponsorship. Um, we will be helping them provide canopies, um, chutes, butters, um, trash receptacle, portable potty, sound system for their bands. Um, and then as well as security is what they are trying to request to get this, um, this program going for October 5th.
Uh, for motion, for purposes of discussion on motion, do you want to?
Second, motion for purposes of discussion, Mayor Porter, thanks, Martinez. Second, I, Counselor, to do, other discussion, Mayor Porter, thanks, Martinez.
The only thing that I have an issue with is us providing the security for that situation. I, I really feel like they're not figuring that out.
Be careful.
I think our, our PD.
Good night, but go bless.
Will be in the area, doing what they do. But as far as us providing, like, you know, very, um, I don't know if you can do that. So...
Mayor Porter, I think only really because it's gonna be a daytime event. So we really will not need it, but just probably just is what you said. Is Officer David, you know, on call for, I don't think he'll be there since he...
As long as that's understood that it's not gonna be a security company or something like that. We can all have an option there, that's doable. But hiring a security company is not gonna work.
Oh, and that was the suggestion of maybe, maybe Chief who, who at the time was in the town. I speak to him about, maybe just making a few passes because it's not gonna go late into the evening or anything. And again, just, uh...
Wait on that, okay?
September, or the team? September.
April, what?
Uh, they thought move to October 5th.
Oh, okay.
It was going to be, um, in September, but with the boxing group. And then as well as the final, we just on the plaza at the Espinola, we're gonna go to October 5th for the seats.
I, I, I don't have an issue with that. I think it's, uh, something welcome that celebrates, uh, culture and our meeting. And I think more that we do that, we have a certain party and it adds all the, the beginning and the, 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 the very awesome.
So, I don't know. You guys mentioned canopies, but I don't see that here on the request. Are you asking for canopies?
Um, I think there's some discussion about, um, shade structures.
Canopies are very expensive. I mean, we're talking about at least $18,000 and then including labor delivery as such. Has that been appropriately taken care of? Because we've never done that for an entity.
I think, um, I'm hoping that what we refer to is just the regular pop-up canopies to, to put, you know, out of populism as well. And then except if they have any vendors, um, the vendors will need to provide their own tables as well as their own canopies to cover their area.
Okay, so ultimately, the only thing they're asking for is the border bodies and the museum. mision and trash.
And actually, we probably won't be using the inside of the mision. It's just actually most of it's gonna be outside. They'll be setting up their shutters all outside and the children will do their dancing and they'll also do the music. Um, all of them outside. The canopies again, it's just a few that they're asking for, which we have, um, actually it's a moment or a center, so we'll be okay with canopies.
Counselor, repeat this first.
So as Ashley said, this did come before the Community Services Committee and we all unanimously agreed it could come before the porta potty. Um, what I want to add is that Senator Neil Cardo Mio did present for our Community Services meeting and he expressed that this is very dear, near and dear to his heart and that he's on board to support however he can support this activity.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I, um, he also said at the expense rent, he would also reverse the expense, uh, to whatever the city spent towards this project if we had, for the porta potties or so on. So he said he universals for whatever we spent to make this event happen.
Chik ching, chik ching. Opening the bathrooms in the convention, as our mayor pro tem.
My figure money is done.
About trying to limit the use of the porta potties. We favor using the bathrooms at the convention, though. Um, is there any way you can keep that as a consideration for this event? Was it that part of it?
No, not the bathrooms in the convention, only because we have issues, one, we do have a big crowd or a lot of people. We have, we more than likely have issues with both for bathrooms. So the porta potties are making a little easier because of the crowd size. It'd be very difficult to, the crowd size to make it out of there in, in, in that small consumer area.
So hope it will be available, a lot of porta potties or not?
Correct.
ADA, ADA.
I think, um, I think we need to take into consideration that if we open up those bathrooms or we have a big group, um, at the convento, we're gonna need additional staff to manage those bathrooms. And as it is right now, um, we're challenged with really capacity in this division. So I think our department, and so I think that we need to take that into consideration reporting.
Is, is there a possibility, Mike, you can go take any one of those ADA bathrooms or trailers? And I know Jeff at one time talked about looking at buying one of those. And it might be an opportunity. Uh, I worked Fiesta's fourteen years in retirement, but one single time that the bathroom was accessible to the public was at Nefal's gate. Whether it took them breaking the sinks, uh, destroying the urinal, plugging it, it never failed. Whether it was the men's or the women's, for fourteen years straight, that bathroom was damaged every single time. So unfortunately, because of the sins of a few, the whole community has to suffer. And I really implore the manager, Mr. Adams, to look at finding, uh, a portable restroom thing and just do it upfront costs. Because as community events keep coming, such as, uh, this, the Light Break, Fiesta's, Over Rider Day, just getting porta potties would be a lot better, I think, the solution we're looking for.
I agree, Mayor, and I believe so, so you maybe did universal this, I mean, just added to it. Senator Bill, Senator. He's very excited about this event and I think it's a great event for the community. It's gonna carry on only because we're trying to read a Spanish language library and we're trying to read the Spanish language facts in northern New Mexico. This doesn't just include Espinola homeowners and I don't really want to open that area because we've bought, we've divided above, we've divided schools in all northern New Mexico and children and adults from all northern New Mexico. Different cultures, different languages, we'll probably have close to twenty or thirty different countries represented at this event.
I want to commend the mayor for permission that the porta potty should be ADA compliant. I think that that's sort of really important thing to remember. Sometimes those porta potties are very difficult for people, especially those with wheelchairs. So I think, I would, that's one reason why I agree with the mayor for permission about the gesture. So if we can make sure that porta, that this one porta potty is ADA compliant, I appreciate that.
We really encourage, uh, this is the first event for this fiscal year that we've been ours. Oh, I'm only at Fiesta's, this is the second event. I really would encourage you to tabulate the costs and, and I know Jeff had worked on that two years ago, uh, looking at ordering all those work, all the costs and that might be more costly for you compared to this event.
Your third time.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor for the adoption of the co-sponsorship for the Pedra de Espinola. Motion made by, I believe it was Mayor Propecedee, Mr. Martinez. Second, I consider to do. Is there any further discussion? And the nudge, call for the question in this court.
Mayor Propecedee, Mr. Martinez? In favor. Counselor Felicia Churet, Victoria?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor Mener Frigus?
For motion.
Counselor Aaron Salata?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel Leview?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Justin Salattores?
In favor.
Well, Chief, very safe, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, we have Resolution 2024 dash forty-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Espinola proving a budget adjustment request increasing revenues and expenditures for this, you know, public library. Geo bonds in the amount of ninety thousand and fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents, presented by Library and Sherry Appleton.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. Uh, this point is coming to us for, um, the Go Bottom and for library acquisitions. And, uh, does there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Propecedee, Mr. Martinez. Second by Counselor Justice Alcántara. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Counselor.
Uh, Library, what do you plan to use on these funds for exactly, you said acquisitions, but then just some of the funds are raised for that?
Uh, this will be used for furniture and new, uh, computers for staff for, uh, all of the library patrons. We currently have eighteen, um, computers for the library patrons, so we're going to update one of those ones.
Is there any other discussion for the council? And the event, and the pickings called right.
Mayor Propecedee, Mr. Martinez, in favor. Counselor Felicia Churet, Victoria?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Yes.
Counselor Mener Frigus?
For motion.
Counselor Aaron Salata?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel Leview?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Justin Salattores?
In favor.
Well, Chief, pass the safe, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lord's Tax Advisory Board Fund, the allocation, I probably hung, Lord's.
Just by the word, we got I.
No, I have I as after B.
I was after H.
Yeah. Wait, I have there, we moved up H to after A.
Yes, sir.
And then I have I coming in after B.
I have, and the motion was that I.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so then. Resolution 2024 dash forty-three contract for North Central Solid Waste Department presented by Finance Minister, Mr. E. Colmoye.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselor, Manager. On the letter packet on page eighty-seven, we will buy the proposed contract for North Central Solid Waste. Along with the resolution for contract for North Central. Uh, to provide entrances to the city, to perform trash and garbage transport in this whole entrance for the city. This is a one-year contract that's been negotiated between the city and North Central.
Mr. Lujan, can you chime in about this more with us? I know you've been working on this a lot.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselors, my stop along with the, the general manager from North Central, Mr. Lujan. Uh, we have him and of course, uh, Teddy Lee is the financial director and incoming in, um, negotiated, has been also full works directed by Tobias. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselors, it's, it's, it's gonna be a ninety, ninety-dollar plan and this alleviates a lot of the city because Mr. Marcus is waiting the tipping fees and the cost of transporting the, the, um, the trash to, to Sanabon County. And then Mr. Marcus is here also to shake voices as well if he has to. Um, and, and it's, it's a win-win for both North Central and for the city of Espinola. We will be able to, uh, save on the tipping costs and, and, and using a private company out of, out of local credit to do our transport and to keep it local. And also the leaders of, of, of starting our, our, our long-term plans for, we're gonna move our transfer station to a, a building that the station buys this time as the, the, the permanent bullets fire at the end of this year. Um, so it, it, it's, uh, it, it gives me time and my, and the finance director to meet with the New Mexico Finance Authority as our sanitation JRTs. As of earlier this year, we're at ten million dollars compared with our wrong director about, um, we, we, eleven? It's eleven, eleven, eleven. So we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna tap into that as much as possible, Mayor, Mayor Protem, um, so that we can have, we can move in that direction. And, and, um, also the, the negotiations have started, Mayor, as you're well aware, as you've been a part of this with La Salamos County and Rio Rico County, the, the, the conversation has started for a landfall between, between the three entities, two counties that are supporters of the municipality. And of course, North Central will be a part of that as well. So, um, if, uh, the, the finance director and full works director, they, they compile this agreement with, with Mr. Marcus and his financial staff as well. And it's before the city, Mayor.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mayor Protem, Mr. Martinez, second by Counselor Rodriguez.
Mayor, this, this is, this is, you're observing. I'm sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand.
I, I think there you, Mr. Rene, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt the motion to second, but I do want to mention a couple things before the vote.
Okay, I think that'd be fine. We have a record of who, who made the motion to second, we can go back. Go ahead, Mr. Rene.
Okay. There are a couple of things that, um, I'd like to revise on the proposed agreement. And if, if it's not a big deal, you can approve it. I would simply ask that you approve it with these two revisions. First, there's a liability clause that provides each party will indemnify the other. That, it would not be legal under New Mexico law. Each party needs to be responsible for its own liability, so revise that. The second is to put a termination clause, um, for cause. And if this is a one-year contract, the idea is to get rates that both parties can agree to, get them locked in, but there's no other provision for termination. And I would recommend having a simple measure in that says either party can terminate for cause, unless it's a thirty, that's written notice, an opportunity to cure.
Uh, I would like to, uh, add some language on the first issue that you have, Mr. Rene.
Do you want me to give you the language?
Uh, just give me a basic.
It would be, first, nothing in agreement, being construed as waiving the identities of the Portance Act. And then second, each party should be responsible for its own maximum emissions.
Honorable Mayor, if I may, if I may.
Mr. Mayor, please come up here.
I'm gonna, uh, amend my motion to include the two concerns if they're in the front row.
Honorable Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem, Mr. Felicia, and Mr. the Counselor, of course, you, Mr. Lujan. Um, this was drafted up by our legal, by, uh, Rene. So if your attorneys will, I think you do this, I will get together and just make the changes that you do. I, I totally understand the changes that he's made. Uh, there, hopefully, you know what? North Central Solid Waste, you know, we're, we're prepared to, to help this, but we want to look forward with your goals to provide the best possible service for your citizens and for your businesses. Uh, we're committed, we're not committed, you know, on whether your contract, I believe it's a, you know, a partnership, uh, we're committed to a point where we're gonna be purchasing that two hundred thousand dollar transport truck just for the, the additional SW so that we can handle that. Um, so we're here to support the city and its neighbors and I don't see a problem with the engineer carrying, not carrying.
John Traumond doesn't like that, that way, he doesn't like it.
I'm gonna ask that the two issues that, uh, Jay has brought forth are amended into this and hopefully, uh, Rene will be on hold to the changes that are, that he's brought.
Yes, ma'am.
If not, then I'll have to come back.
And I can agree with him that, uh, we, and then we, for, 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 for.
And it's always good to have, uh, very good relationship, just, we, we don't know what's happening. But, uh, we certainly appreciate North Central helping the city in this way and because it's important that we can pay the money here in Espinola. Uh, I think it's important that we support each other and taking this community trash really is much more practical. I would like us also to look forward to some situation where we have a solution for the needs and figure out how we get, and the ability of our people being able to toss these at some money.
And Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, again, and the Counselor. Uh, North Central Solid Waste has received a two hundred sixty thousand dollar grant for the, the environment department for the purpose of recycling tires. Uh, we also apply for a, 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 we will be granted, uh, a grant so that we can purchase a, um, grinder or, or a mulcher so that we can start creating something positive. We want to get away from the more equal fit and get away from the extirion of the ash. It's not feasible, it, it's not, it's just, uh, it's a bad thing all the way around. So that's why we're kind of, that's, so right now, and that, this doesn't mean that it's, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus, and I appreciate you being there personally, I should look from that, 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 Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Mr. Rene?
Uh, a question for Mr. Marcus, if I could.
A moment ago, Eric said that the tipping fee, I think he said the tipping fees were being waived. Uh, it's my understanding that any tipping fees and hauling costs are simply included in the fees, the tonnage fees. So I'd like to clarify, is that correct, Mr. Marcus?
Honorable Mayor, uh, Madam Protem, Commissioner, who's on the council, who's the manager. That is correct, it's ninety dollars a ton and that's all you're gonna pay. With the tipping fees, we pay the required amount.
Could you should another amendment on the fourth warehouse? Uh, since warehouse and hostel service will be ninety dollars a ton, could you put warehouse the total cost of the service will be ninety dollars per tonne? So that we understand that the tipping and everything is included, make sure that's in the.
I believe that's in the resolution.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is.
It's in the actual resolution and authorize it, Mr. Marcus, to sign the executive agreement on behalf of the council.
It's, it's by. It is in there.
Thank you. Is there, I want to thank the Honorable Mayor and the authority body for putting in the door so that we can start this partnership and, uh, hopefully get picked up by many persons, picked up by our families and our citizens, our citizens of the city too. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. I, I wanted to commend the chairman of the authorities, Mr. Rado, for working with us too and thank you, Mr. Marcus, for working with us. Any no further questions? No further questions?
Yes, Mayor, but Councilor Rodriguez needs to address just in the second, he needs to review the changes.
Any need speakers?
As a second motion, are you going to the changes? As, as Mayor Porten, it's here.
The friend of the mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion to come before this body is writing this topic, would the question call the roll?
Mayor Porten, please, Mr. Martinez, in favor. Councilor Pritchard, Tulip, and Victoria?
In favor.
Councilor Pedro Fuentes?
Yes.
Councilor Janet Roritas? In favor. Councilor Ernest Salazar?
In favor.
Councilor Samuel Adu?
In favor.
Councilor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Councilor Justine Sosa-Covas?
In favor.
Motion to approve.
Moving on now, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board funding allocations presented by Public Fund, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Chair. Moving on, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board funding allocations presented by Public Fund, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Chair. No, I don't think it's necessary. Unless there's additional questions, he's been in the presentation room.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and Councilor. I've heard you have a allocation of, for approval, seven thousand dollars to the San Gregor Historical Society. That was brought to us very different. It is different, I guess. On the twenty-fifth, we're putting on about seven thousand dollars. I, if you guys, I stand to hear the questions, do you have any? That's why I requested if President, uh... San Gregor Historical Society, if you guys have any additional questions for the ones that's...
Is there a pretty council justice on the side of the board, so if they can, like, Councilor Aaron's, that's not under discussion, Councilor, you do.
Yes, could you briefly explain those seven thousand dollars?
I will refer that to the President, John Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Porten, Member of the Assemblybody and Councilor Adu, we asked, we posted a seven-thousand-dollar grant for the following. Basically, based on your, the application that you wrote out, we have administrative costs for about twenty-five-hundred, advertising budget about fifteen-hundred, and Miss Williams' cost at thirty-five, thirty-five. And getting what these costs, we know that as part of the San Gregor Historical Society, we have responsibility through our community of the city to provide the dozens for the tourists. So all that is volunteer, nine, ten dozens of support, we all volunteer our time to promote, run events, to promote new exhibits, those require money for advertising and for lots of other things that we're going to do via use of itself. So if I'm specifying some of the costs I can, but which are basically the categories, we did have, we put one facility that we had unanticipated, and we have to throw in another twenty-five-hundred from our funds at that time for the, to include the city or insurance, so that became a high administrative cost that we'll have to review, see.
I just had a question. I don't believe, because this has come up before, I don't think we can lose Lodger's Tax money for insurance purposes or like that, that's what you're planning?
No, we have other funds, but it took away from our, the administrative costs, I took away the two-hundred, two-hundred, twenty, about fifteen-hundred, two-thousand. So employing that, that's part of our request system.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to reply to that. Any discussion?
All right, if there's no further discussion, would the question call for the roll?
Mayor, I found my hand up. I just wanted to make sure that Lodger's Tax could be used for administrative costs?
That's, so that's what I wanted, yeah, to specifically play that out because it can't. Why specifically administrative costs?
So, if I may, Mayor, Councilor Benavides, in the application, they asked for administrative costs. So we had to categorize all the costs based on your application. So the administrative costs, we included what we had paid out and stayed out, we got other funding from other sources, we know that's what our administrative costs are, for the, the twenty-five-hundred. But I can easily go to other sources like our advertising and running the trains. We have a lot of costs associated with maintaining, we want to have inventory of our artifacts, and so a lot of things will go into that type of service. But in your grant application, Councilor, you asked for administrative costs, so we need to look at changing how the application is written out.
The application is written out in the aspect of your overall total entity's budget, but regarding that, I'm pulling up the code right now. It indicates it's for establishing, operating, purchasing, constructing, otherwise acquiring and constructing, extending, improving, equipping, furnishing, or acquiring real property or in interest in real property or the site or grounds for tourist-related facilities, attractions, or transportation systems of the city or the community. And additionally, advertising, publicizing, and promoting tourist-related attractions, facilities, and events of the city or community, and tourist facilities and attractions with community care. Mr. Renee, do you have anything to chime in on that aspect?
Mayor, I've got the same concerns as Councilor Benavides. However, I've not seen this application or any of the materials. I would want to review that. Also, if I understood correctly, does now, is there an existing contract with the city and the society?
I know.
Yes, there is, it expires December of twenty-two-four.
Okay.
I would want to review that contract as well because the services provided in that may overlap those being requested Lodger's Tax funds.
And I wanted to make it clear, and Mr. Duval, I gave over the application process, we don't give a check to the entity.
Mr. Mayor, yes, you are correct. We have found out through meetings is that we are actually trying to revamp the whole application, revamp it out now to, with all the other members. For any questions and additions or definitions, so we can submit it to your, to the equal agency, so we can approve a new one. Because we're finding that there's many outdated information on there, right? Airbnb, we're not, there's multiple things that we're actually looking at, as we speak. So when we first, we first came together for this, we used the previous application. So we're looking at revamping the application, and we will send this to you guys, like to your attorney, but this is just one of those things that has been brought to us in a short time period, and we're trying to revamp the Lodger's Tax Board with what we're doing. So forgive us for that, but we will, we will give you guys a solid piece. We have other things that we're working on, but that's what we are, we are looking for.
Mr. Duval, I want to follow up with my career, too. The process is also because it's a reversal, that the city has the right to reject any invoices that are not in correlation with the Lodger's Tax funds.
That is correct. So the way I, the resolution that is in place currently is, San Gregor, we will submit an invoice to the city, and then the city will approve it before it's paid out to meet all the guidelines, and that's how they receive their reversals.
That's what you're doing?
Ms. Salazar, could you, Mrs. Salazar, could you just list exactly what the number would be, so it makes some confusion?
Again, based on the application, we've indicated that we would have add our twenty and fifteen-hundred to the newspaper, we have, you know, additional funds, like a hundred and sixty for our posthumous, that have to go up to the plaza. We do these brochures that we pass on, going to be very well-done and very professional. And that's about, about four-hundred dollars there. We also have the museum, not, sorry, magnets that we do to attract people and give to go to, to the visitors. We also have stamps and constable memories out, the trophies out. And I do want to indicate that in the application, our total cost, when we are about, we looked at the twenty-seven thousand out of that, but listening to this cost and the advertising alone are thirty-five, thirty-five, and fifteen-hundred. So we can ask for the total amount of, what it really is costing us to have general operating funds available for, for attracting the tourists as per our review. And actually, I want to mention that I let your attorney, as mentioned that, because that's gonna be my next step in September, is to indicate to the city that we need to relook at that agreement.
Mayor Porten, please, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Salazar, for bringing that agreement up. I really feel like it's important for these entities to not end in December in the middle of our fiscal year. I think it's important that we start contracts to end at the fiscal so that you have the entire fiscal year to spend that money.
The contract, the agreement was like for three years. This is my narrative, we have, we have submitted for three years that came up under the former administration, so it expired, it never came up for renewal, and we just went with that agreement until I became President, till we see this proof. And we know it expired in December, so we need to cycle it a different cycle.
What we want to do now is come back before the COVID-19, extend that to the end of the fiscal June period, and then after that, come back and renew like we would normally. I think that's important, that we have that amount of time for that Lodger's Tax to be utilized instead of paying, only the run to be here by December and try and do what you need to do by then.
Right, maybe in the fall. But I do want to state that we're asked to find any insurance that is never being reviewed. So your former community services person, all these standard practices, they need to provide insurance to have the city be officially insured. Which should rather surprise us, but we complied because we figured since we have an agreement to work together. But that may be something, since the attorney has brought it up, that he might want to review.
So I want to try and, oh, let you go, Councilor Benavides, this comes into next, the next topic regarding the question proposals. We have a couple of resources versus formerly the Northern Historical Arts Center, the Espinal YMC eighteen Center, the San Gregor Historical Society, and the Espinal Around the Main Society, operating out of a city facility. And we cover all their utilities and such. This is the only entity that the city of Espinal doesn't give a guaranteed amount of money towards the operation costs for their entity. And I've been talking about this for quite some time, about this, and it's really not fair to the Historical Society for them to be able to function, and again, it's an facility, facility, and we cover their utilities, but we're providing funds to all these other entities that are utilizing our facilities, and they are supposed to provide a service to the community, and essentially they're fundraising, and then they're asking us for this Lodger's Tax application. So I brought it up this past year, fiscal year, it didn't seem like it got much traction, but we really need to look at it. If this year comes up this next year, when the San Gregor Historical Society's contract ends on June thirty, possibly, well, it ends in December, right, with Mayor Porton making it to the fiscal year, we need to look at putting allocated funds possibly to the San Gregor Historical Society if they're gonna operate out of a city facility and provide a service to the public. We cannot expect them to run, run and provide a service to the community if we're not even giving them any funds, and it's really not fair to them to be able to get their support they need. Their fundraising, provide a service to the community on behalf of the city, it's not fair.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to mention that our, we do seek out other funds, but we did have to do, we do our reports, and everything very well organized, and you have brought in almost fifty percent or more at this time than last year of our visitors that's helping the tourism industry with them in the plaza. And I want to thank, I'm sorry about the support, the ability, and she's what we have. It's been very helpful to the society, we appreciate it, and it's, yeah.
Councilor Benavides, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mayor, I was actually gonna bring that up, too, because operating costs are expensive, and as we think about film and bringing the industry more into the city, I think it is better for us to do some sort of additional funding because we do it for a house, and then we brought it up, and then we don't have much money when it comes to Lodger's Tax, but then maybe what we could do, I believe, is mobile for smaller brands specific to individuals as they're having, or entities as they're having, you know, their different entertainment or whatever they want to put on for the city, that we allow them to have money used for advertising for those types of things. But I think operating costs in this case, I think probably are a good idea as we go forward.
Does anyone else have anything regarding this? Mr. Duval, this is a reoccurring issue, and I really strongly like us to get this solved out.
This is too hard, isn't it?
No, you, Mr. Duval. No, 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 regarding supporting an entity, if we're gonna continue, it's up to, we'll have to the Council, and I continue that lease agreement. What we really need to, and I know I applaud the work of ACO, figure out what contracts are expired throughout the city, but we give out money, and that's why I brought it up tonight, because it's gonna come up in this next thing. We're giving out money to these nonprofit entities to operate, provide a service to the community, and we're putting it for all of them that operate our facilities except for this one specific entity.
This is an important one.
And, you know, we just recently freed up someone, and I'm not saying that, you know, I understand we have, we have long made the discussion for the budget, but we just now, we're not doing one professional services agreement, that's for Northern Historical Arts Center anymore, and I know we, you know, we have, we have shortfalls in the budget, but this is an example of, we're giving, they were given sixty thousand a year, we need to figure out what we can do to assist the Historical Society. Because, like I said, we're gonna go into this topic, you know, next, next, think about the agenda, that's, I think, that's a really good topic to talk about. Is there any comments, additional comments, questions from the government body?
I just wanted, as you guys know, that we also did approve the Land Water People Time Magazine, to place a full-page article in, was something that, I guess, that was done previous years before the pandemic, it didn't stop. I just, as you guys know, I get, it circulates to forty thousand people, we are, it's a year-long subscription, and so I just wanted to just, I see, I see, you guys, and, it's not so that you have copies of it, but it is, just so you guys know that we are trying as a Lodger's Tax Board to promote Espinal, and we will be bringing other teams to it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, I asked for this year to pass out our newest exhibit on the project list, so we had it open, I was in Denver, I was a big lieutenant, but this other tenant, we have a manual plan. And admission free to this museum. And admission free to this museum.
This was, I mean, this was a great year.
Keep your head down.
You guys have that action probably to have that.
Can I have one?
Alright, if there's no further questions, I'm gonna call for the vote.
Mayor Protan, please, some more teams in favor. Counselor Felicia Toya, or Chuleta Toya?
In favor.
Counselor Pedro Fuentes?
Yes.
Counselor Lynette Rodriguez, I'd watch. Counselor Ernest Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel LeDoo?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Justice of the South Coles.
Let the record, let the record reflect, we'll go back to the Counselors on the South Coles, they exited the meeting, I guess, as of eight o three P M.
So long.
Oh, oh, okay.
Mayor, the next item is one half to be able to be managed, and it's not prepared. Oh, the, the proposal of the L A team, sir.
What do you mean?
Thank you.
Well, pardon me, so I just want to clarify to the council, again, the day, the city and the finance department will reject if it's not in compliance with the Lodger's Tax, the marketing advertising. It's a reimbursement process, there's no check that goes to the Historical Society, they just have to come in and get a reimbursement process, just so you all know. Thank you, Mr. Ronan, for the hard work you guys do with the Lodger's Tax, I appreciate it, you're all on the ears.
Counselor Cruz, can you hear us? Motion carries, seven, seven.
Group politics, group politics.
Alright, request for proposals, twenty twenty four dash one, Esplanola Team Center, presented by the committee, the director, Michael Adams.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Counselor McPharrell, and City Manager. All I'm letting you know that I'm putting out a request for proposal for the Esplanola Team Center. So I just wanted to let the council know that I'm moving forward with that.
Motion to table to the next meeting.
You don't, you don't need to, I mean, I don't know why this is quick, you don't need to approve an RFP to go out, you have to approve an RFP once it's come back.
Just been advised.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't.
Okay, yeah. No, this isn't, this isn't an exception, I know, this is excluding the RFP. The council doesn't need to authorize for the RFP, they have to offer, they have to approve or disapprove the awarding of an RFP.
So you don't need to do the reaction.
No. I think this was just a, sorry.
No, just wanted to inform, it's a felony, I know.
Maybe should have been this, that is from the manager, but thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Counselor, to the Toya.
Mayor, Counselor, I need to exit the meeting for the city, my apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let the record reflect, the Counselor to the Toya has left the meeting, it's eight o five. So, Ms. Martin, let the record reflect regarding this item, that this is, this is, this is out of order, on this on the agenda of the city.
I just put it as informational.
Yeah, yeah, it's just. You have a fire truck purchase presented by Finance Director April Maya and Assistant Fire Chief John Fisher.
Let me go in. So in your package, starting on page eighty two, what we are proposing is the fire department has proposed the purchase of a new vehicle. And that represents the finance committee and forward over to full approval from the council. We can go to page, let me see, is that order, is it very nice to know? Okay, so last meeting, we can go on reverse of page sixty five of ninety, we will see a proposal from Trauma Score for a hundred thousand, six, eight hundred eighty one dollars and nineteen cents, that they're proposing to purchase a vehicle, deliver a statewide pricing agreement, statewide pricing agreement is at the top of the quote, and pages prior to that have the statewide pricing agreement on the package. On page forty one and forty, you will see that revenue was collected in the amount of hundred seventy five thousand for the sale of a vehicle that they recently sold. And they have added that into their budget, with the state fire funds that they will be using to purchase the vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we approach it, thank you, Martina, second, I counsel you to do. A discussion, under discussion, I counsel you to do.
I wanted to thank Ms. Moia and Assistant Chief Flucker Shannon for their presentation of the finance meeting, the work over, being detailed about through the selection process of how this, the state of scrap worked, and I really appreciated the logic of choosing the vehicle and all that, so I think that this, this is a good reason.
Any more further discussion, then the question is called a roll.
Mayor Protan, please, some more teams in favor. Counselor Pedro Fuentes?
Yes.
Counselor Lynette Rodriguez? Counselor Ernest Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel LeDoo?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Justice of the South Coles.
In favor. Sorry, my name is delayed.
Get started.
So, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Justice, thank you, sir. Thank you, for all of that. Alright, present, twenty twenty four dash three, now, present motion authorizing finally an application for financial assistance from the next water just for Riverside Drive, presented by Finance Director April Maya. Hey, how you doing?
Okay, so in your package, page eighty three, there is a motion to authorize filing an application for financial assistance from the next water just for, um, this is just.
Motion to approve, I propose to take it to Martina, second, I counsel you to allow it, there's a discussion. There is, the question is called a roll.
Mayor Protan, please, some more teams in favor.
Yes.
Counselor Ernest Salazar?
In favor.
Counselor Samuel LeDoo?
In favor.
Counselor Denise Benavides?
In favor.
Counselor Justice of the South Coles.
In favor.
So that's it, that's the end of the meeting for me. I appreciate every single one of you. Thank you guys for tuning in. Thank you. You guys are awesome. Until next time, guys. Laters.